I guess we are ready to get going.
Good morning. As usual, we're just going through each department to tell you their challenges and what they've accomplished this year and give you an overview of what they're planning for 2026. This isn't the final be, you know, end all, be all, end all, whatever. This is just parts of the puzzle. So next month, we'll have more puzzle pieces. Do you want to do the clicking or you want me to do the clicking?
Would you do the clicking? Okay, I can't multitask. Good morning, commissioners. We are going to start off this morning with a manager's introduction, which just is a high-level summary of what you might see the next few days. So let's just jump into a quick overview of the budget process. This is specifically more for Melanie, just to remind you, because you are new and I'm new, so I thought it would be good to put this slide in here. So we received, we kicked off budget a couple of months ago. Is it a couple of months ago, maybe a month, month and a half ago?
It's a couple of months.
Couple of months. And so budget requests, budget documents go out to the department heads and we say, fill out your budgets. This year, we requested to keep it in line with last year's numbers because we've received requests from the commission to keep a steady mill levy. So we receive those budgets and Donna works her magic and we go through those line by line to compile just a rough draft. And then we go into capital budgets. And so that process is happening right now. That's why you get a high-level budget overview today. We don't get into the details until we get assessed valuation and we get all our revenue estimates input into the budget, which happens in June, later May, early June. The assessed valuation report, which pretty much determines what our, what the value of our mill levy will be, comes on the 15th of June. So you will have, I'm kind of jumping ahead, but you will have a draft proposed budget in July. So we'll do this again. Just a reminder, revenue neutral rate is still on the books and we have to, it's just an extra step that we have to go through. And if we were to, what revenue neutral rate means is if we were to, I have to write this down, the mill levy rate that would generate the same amount of tax dollars as the prior year. So if the mill levy, if the assessed valuation goes up, the value of the milk goes up, then technically to get the same number of dollars, you could reduce the mill levy. So in order to keep revenue neutral rate, we just, we have to follow a process. We just want to remind you of that. That lengthens the budget process from a legal standpoint through October. So this is going to be a long process. Okay, next slide. Again, a reminder, we have a strategic plan. The strategic plan was adopted last year. It is my North Star. Everything that we do here at the city, I ensure that we are aligning with the goals that this commission has adopted. And those goals are, the plan is a 24-month plan and it is split into three goals. And those three goals are sustaining exceptional public service, creating a welcoming place to call home, and planning and growing for the future. Under each goal is a value statement and under each value statement is six to 10 metrics or tactics, actual achievable goals. For example, one, if you could go back real quick. For example, the under sustaining exceptional public service, something that we've been working on in administration proactively, I'd like to say proactively, is improving trust. It's kind of a fluffy word and, you know, you don't, it's not something you just do and you check it off, but it's a myriad of actions and steps that you have to do consistently through a period of time. And so we are concentrating our efforts in doing things that build upon each other that increase trust with our residents. There's a saying in public service, government happens at the speed of trust. And we are more effective and efficient if we have the trust of our constituents. So one of the items, one of the metrics underneath that goal would be implementing a online pay option. If our residents don't have to come to City Hall and they can pay online and it's easy and it's efficient, then they begin to trust us. Another item is improving our website, making it more efficient, more effective with more information, making it as transparent as possible. So there's no question about, I think I saw something this morning, someone put it on Facebook, does anybody know who I can call animal control about X, Y, and Z? And I thought, well, I would hope that you would Google, you know, City of Newton, animal control, and you would have a Q and A that says, this is where you call, you know? Make it super easy so that when we can't pick up a phone, they can find it themselves. And we do have an app, so anyways, I kind of beat that one to death. Next slide. All right, some of the key points that you will hear about throughout the next couple of days are the following. I'm going to jump to the second one because I'm going to leave the pay study for the end. Healthy budgets for maintenance. You will see that we, at the minimum, sustain maintenance budgets. That is built in our strategic plan. We don't want to, we know that it is more expensive to catch up a building or any type of maintenance on the backend than it is to keep it up year to year. Funding of public engagement and outreach, funding of parks and playgrounds. These are, the outreach was a commission decision. I know that all of you have in some way, shape, or form informed us that you'd like for us to go to the people, go to our residents. Rich came up with an idea called City Desk, and that's actually being implemented, which is pretty cool. The funding of parks and playgrounds, that is something that has, it's feedback we've received from residents over many, many years. And we actually had the blessing, the luxury of putting it into our budget last year and we've bought things for our parks. I believe we've, have we put in our swings yet? We haven't.
Not yet.
Okay. But we're actually making improvements and we're hearing positive feedback from our residents. They like to see these, the parks are fun, they're exciting, families like to use them. So we continued that budgeting into this budget. Maintain our bond rating. We will, as always, our bond rating is very important. It determines pretty much our interest rate. We have an opportunity to perhaps work with Moody's or S and P to be, S and P, to do an actual live audit, like where they come and they reassess. Oh, I'll defer to Donna real quick to talk about that.
They just do a visit and they haven't been here since I've been here. We just do it on the phone and they question me about, you know, what we've done, our policies and stuff like that. That's why you see the investment report now quarterly in there because they wanted that in there. So anything they ask me to do, I do, to keep our bond rating. But how you want, if you want to go up, then they need to come and see if anything's changed, especially in your economic development part. And we're really growing. And so we could do that this year, but we thought we'll wait till next year when a lot of things are completed and it'll look that much better. So we hope to be able to raise it up a little bit next year.
Yeah, you should see us on those S and P calls. It's smiles and we are the best city ever and we tell them all the great things that are happening in Newton. So, and we kept our rating last year, so. And use of public and private partnerships and grant funding, that is also built in our strategic plan, is actually a goal. We will leverage every partnership we have and any grant opportunity before we hit our budget. Back to the classification and benefit study implementation. Just a quick overview to kind of set a tone for, again, the next few days and also for McGrath when they come on the 12th. So we conducted a classification and compensation study and it's wrapping up. There are so many moving parts. And what McGrath did is they analyzed the city's entire pay plan, from pay to benefits to time off, I mean, you name it. They looked at the whole thing and they looked at it as a whole. They compared that internally as far as pay equity and compression to make sure, you know, there is some room between different levels of positions. And they also compared it to external market information. The compensation study was delayed and part of that was because we did not get market data as easily and as quickly as we had hoped. Actually, the consultant asked for a call in the middle of February and said, do you want us to proceed or do you want us to continue hounding? And at that point, I did, when she told us the cities that had not responded, those were our key regional competitors. And I said, we can't afford to not have that information. So we started making phone calls, we actually did some Cora requests, excuse me, and we really pried to get that information. And we ultimately got it, which is great. It just lengthened the process. So now that we have that data, that data was presented to all the department heads as a range for compensation, that's all we've done, just the compensation part. The key question that has not been answered that Melina, the consultant that worked directly with us, will come to you and ask in the next two weeks, is what is the compensation philosophy for the city? And the compensation philosophy is really what, how does this body decide how we pay their, our employees? And you'd think that's a simple question, you know? But it's actually a framework because you tie it to your strategic plan. You could say, we want to be smack dab in the middle, we want to be average. And that's, that's a.
Could you repeat that question? I want to write it down.
Yeah.
How, how does what? Would you?
How we decide to pay our employees. It would be a frame, I would call it a framework. Don't mean to make it complicated.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No. It ensures that our pay aligns with our values and that it aligns with the market. We, and she'll explain what that means. I mean, she'll come and she'll talk to you about it. And the direction after she tells you all the things that she found will give us, will allow us to go back to our budget and see where we need to go. Okay, next slide. All right, some of the accomplishments we had last year. Infrastructure maintenance and improvements. Again, we, this commission decided to budget for the maintenance of our buildings, of our, of our properties, and we did that seamlessly. I mean, it was, it was pretty good. We began the classification and benefit survey. I know you're probably thinking that's not a major accomplishment, but it was a very, is a large undertaking. We're already, you know, pretty maxed out on our day-to-day and taking on a big project like this just required us to shuffle some things, so we call that a win. Our CVB, Main Street Coordinator, our Community Development, our Economic Development Director, we have proactively worked on how we can become a friendlier, more effective department. I'll call us the Development Department, partnering with our Public Works Department to bring in new business. So when someone says, hey, I want to, I want to buy a building and I want to remodel it, that we bring everyone to the table so that there isn't any surprises. And we're also working with partners, whether it be the Chamber, whether it be our Utility Billing Office, to figure out how on the, how we can pick up some of those inquiries before someone even buys a building so that we can say, hey, just a heads up. I don't know if our real estate agents like that, but we are doing everything we can so that our investors know what they're getting into, good and bad. We invested in quality-of-life amenities last year. We grew our communications and outreach initiatives. If you have not met Sarah, then you need to meet Sarah. She has really brought a different and unique perspective to what engagement means. And she's doubled down on all of our efforts, including what the framework Erin has built, and it's been, it's been very refreshing. And again, that is tied to our strategic goal of building trust. And again, we're continuing our grant and partnership opportunities. I won't go over every single one of our 2025 and 2026 goals. Next year, we will update or refresh our 24-month plan and that just kind of keeps us in line to make sure we're not staying stagnant. But these are some of the items that are in the plan that we need to, that we should and will wrap up at the end of next year. Lastly, some of the challenges we see in the next 18 months include the items listed on this PowerPoint. The first one, federal and state mandated improvement costs and programs. Those are coming down the pipeline as we speak. It's very fluid right now. Do you have that slide?
Yeah.
Okay. I missed a slide. This is different than this. Okay. Some of the budgetary changes, excuse me, and the challenges. So we're going to start off with succession planning. I see this as an opportunity more as a, more than a challenge because now that we have a fresh new framework for compensation and we can say, hey, we're competitive, we have, we have checked the box off of what it means to recruit and retain our employees, now how do we plan for the exiting of our employees? And so that's the next step. I'm excited for that. Melina will work with us on creating, on making sure that our framework that we're using aligns with, with the compensation study. So that's, that is a, an opportunity. Implementing the pay and compensation study, so that, from a budgetary standpoint, I mean, how are we going to make it work? Also, the benefit portion of the recommendations from McGrath, we, I guess, I, I say we, I have decided that those benefits that exist and the ones that are being recommended really should come from our staff. Like what, where should we be placing our priority when it comes to your vacation, when it comes to, I mean, would you rather have tuition reimbursement? Would you have, would you rather have family leave? Would you rather have? And so we are kicking off an employee survey in the next probably week at the latest. And those questions are in that survey so that we can get a pulse of what's important to our employees. And we're going to use that to try and align the benefits that we already have. So this is not necessarily a budgetary value add, this is just a repositioning. If there is a value add, of course, that will come to the commission through the budget process. So I think that was a neat way to say, hey, we value you, I mean, these are your benefits. Where do you prefer? The growth of community projects, we're, we are, we're definitely growing as a city. There are a lot of projects. I mean, it feels like it's been nonstop since I started on January 9th last year. And I, and I know how limited we are with staffing. So doing all the stuff that we are doing, keeping the momentum is, is a challenge. Internal training, a challenge and opportunity, if you will. We very much believe and value the PCM model, so much so that we have invested in an employee who will now, who will be doing PCM training in-house. And she is working very, very diligently in, on a training plan that will be kicked off this fall. She even has a class already, so super, super excited. In conjunction with that, our HR department is going to be kicking off some internal training. So we're going to have internal training programs for employees who can't, you know, actually leave the city or it's actually an opportunity to save dollars. You know, we don't have to send someone to Kansas City to get, you know, a decision-making trainee or a supervisory training, so that's exciting.
What's the PCM stand for? Did you say that?
Process, Process Communication Model.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
And then back to the last slide, yeah. Operational challenges. I want to point out the first one, the federal and state mandated improvement costs. Like I mentioned before, it's fluid. We have things coming down the pipeline from this last legislative session, one being the economic incentive mandate, that we have to put our incentives on our website and make sure that it's in a readable format and it has to be maintained and updated. Actually, at the City Managers Conference last week, someone asked, you know, where's, where are the details? When do we have to do this? How is it going to work? And the Department of Commerce pretty much said, we're figuring it out. As we figure it out, you will figure it out. So it's kind of gray right now and, but it'll be another responsibility one of our staff will have to take on. So that's just one example. Debt obligations, that's another operational challenge. We are, we are close to what I would say comfortable debt loads in our utilities, specifically in our sewer. So that just limits what utility projects we can take on, specifically on the cusp of our water tower improvement project. So that just means kind of slowing down a little on those utility projects when we Current services provided to citizens and costs, obviously, the way the market's going, things are, things are more expensive, but we still have to provide a service. And, yeah. The cost of prior city commissioners' commitments and projects, a perfect example of that is that golf course debt that we talked about yesterday. And, okay. I said that would be quick. I'm sorry that took so long. You have any, any questions? Just a quick overview of kind of where we're headed. All right, I will pass it on to Donna.
Well, I can't get out of this dang thing. Yes. There we go. Yes. Our next one, we move on to admin, which is going to be Rebecca.
All right. Some of the items in the administration budget narrative pieces overlapped with Daniela's overview for the whole city because in administration, a lot of these items are really at a overarching organizational, community-wide level. So some, there are going to be some pieces you'll notice that are missing from our budget presentation. And one of those is those operational challenges, budgetary challenges piece, because they really fit in line with what Daniela mentioned for the whole organization, for the city as a whole.
Didn't mean to steal your thunder.
No, 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 it's fine. Just as a quick review, what we fit into administration, which is kind of like a big fluffy catch-all, it feels like sometimes, is the City Managers Office, the Clerk, Communications, Human Resources, and our development activities. And you can see here a quick overview of how that kind of breaks out. Again, it's, it tends to be a little bit fluid as, as the years progress, but all of those things are in here. When you do get to the numbers, remember that all the things that happen as the city as a whole or on behalf of you all as the city commissioners come out. So if there's memberships that we have to pay organizationally, why, they do come out of that line. So sometimes some of the lines might feel higher due to the number of employees when you get to those numbers, but as a member, we take on a lot of that as a citywide piece. Slide. All right, so this just goes over kind of everybody's piece of the responsibility. The city commission, as you're all aware of, your goals and the items that we try to make sure we have funding for are setting your policy for taxation, appropriation, ordinances, the growth, development, and land use, utility costs and delivery. Also, you have the authority to authorize contracts for everything from the recreation to Harvey, these are things that we've done before. You're still doing them. They no longer come out of administration. They come out of other funds at your request from previous years, but obviously, we still discuss those. Mainly, they've moved to economic development or to the funds where they'd be most appropriately managed. In the City Managers Office, she is responsible for carrying out those policies that you put forth and those goals, like she mentioned through the strategic plan. Obviously, directing the day-to-day operations of the city, that includes hiring and firing personnel, ensuring that effective and efficient delivery of services, assisting the finance staff with the budget preparation and monitoring, recommending any policies and programs to you all as the governing body. And then she also serves as the city's representative in various arenas and items. The City Clerk is your keeper of all things, proceedings, actions, and records, also serves as a Freedom of Information Officer.
My hair is so white.
No more pictures.
I know, I'm looking at my facial features over here going, oh, man. They're not working that bad. Sorry, go ahead.
She does provide you with the agenda packets and meeting materials, updates and maintains the city codes, records, special assessments, licensing, permitting, cemetery records amongst her many other duties. But those are the requirements of the position that we want to make sure. We always maintain funding. In Human Resources, that department oversees recruiting of qualified job applicants and position openings, ensures that there's consistency citywide for the personnel policies and implementation, continues to monitor regulations compliance, maintains all of our employee records, ensures payments are made correctly to employees' paychecks. Then again, overseeing that quality of benefits for the employees, like Daniela mentioned in this employee survey, asking about their benefits, has taken a lead role in this compensation study. They serve as kind of our first set of promoters for the servant leadership culture that we all uphold and then continue to maintain that career in organizational development, like you saw as one of our goals in both the strategic plan and Daniela's piece. Communications has grown this year to be a two-person team now. And in communications, you'll see managing that public information, communication, marketing, engagement. I mean, this is all of the things, if you want to know about the city, comes through communications. As a spokesperson, it is the official public information officer for emergency response, oversees the website, administers our social media, and then coordinates some of the city function events, like forms, community events, City Desk. And then the final eyes on all marketing materials that come from the city. Community development is a large, broad scope that we're, it's a team sport these days. So in community development, like Daniela mentioned, this is a multi-pronged approach to provide technical assistance to applicants for incentive items, citizens who are asking questions, developers that want to know the best way that they can develop to meet their needs and ours. They ask about regulatory standards, tax credits, land use, zoning, subdivision. All of those things can be answered at the community development level. There's the oversight and execution of the strategic development plans for housing, downtown, comprehensive planning, the recruitment and development of industrial, residential, commercial falls under here. And then implementing and staffing the Community Development Commission and the Land Bank. And then we do serve as the staff of the Newton Main Street. While that organization is separate from the city, because it is required to be, we do serve as a staff in the housing for the Newton Main Street Initiative. We had some great accomplishments. One thing to mention, it's going to be a separate budget, but IT has come under the auspices of the administration. So we're going to go ahead and note that our IT Director, Brenda, had won the GMS Presidential Award and the Business Journal Women Who Lead in Technology this year. We had some certified public managers in 2024 that completed that course, including our Communications Director, Erin, and our Community Development, Zach. And our City Manager was nominated for the 40 Under 40 and won that. It's with the Business Journal. Our City Clerk was the Clerk of the Year. So we had quite a big year for our awards and our, and our leadership. We did also, as you know, were able to adopt the new strategic plan and develop the city's mission and vision statements, which are in the forefront of that strategic plan. Just a little, I don't want to leave out Chris. I know Chris Tow also received an award from IMLA, I think. Everyone received awards last year. Yeah, I think it's in his slides.
Okay, well.
Just making sure we don't miss anybody.
When you get so many awards, it's just hard to keep track.
Looking forward to our 2025 and 2026 goals and objectives, we're continuing to implement that outreach and engagement program. Obviously, City Desk is just one piece of it. We have been implementing our TV advertising campaign. Hopefully, you've been able to catch some of those that feature our wonderful staff, who are great spokespeople. We'll be launching the new web- We'll be launching the new website here just within a few weeks. The in-house process communication model training that we'd already mentioned. We want to continue those joint work sessions like you had last night to continue that communication between the other governing entities. We're planning to increase our recruiting efforts for commercial and residential developers. We don't want to lose this pace of growth, and I want to continue that. We continue to support the rehabilitation and revitalization programs. I walked downtown probably a week and a half ago and sat out with a coffee, and I just could not believe the amount of work that had been, happened in the past 24 months. And we just want to continue that momentum and build into it. Implementing the classification and benefit study will be a major undertaking for 2025. Part of the succession planning will be to create continuity of operations planning and then expanding the online pay options, like we mentioned, for residents, and then review and update municipal code. And again, this will be the, these are your first big numbers that you're going to be seeing. The personnel service is really, at this point, without the salary study being completed, it's kind of a placeholder of a best guess. And you're going to see that through all of your budgets today. Donna's worked incredibly hard to give you the best educated estimate with the pieces at hand before we've adopted the new pay structure. So you'll see that. You'll see your contractual services staying about the same, commodities and supplies having a slight reduction because of some things that did not need to be repurchased again. And then, of course, the transfers, because as a reminder, all of those tax transfers come in through admin and then get transferred back out. So that's why there's always a large number there for that sales tax transfer. Any questions on the administration piece? It's okay, I'm making good time.
Next, we're going to go on to information technology. Maybe, there we go. Nope. See, it did it again. It brought up, that convention bureau wants to come up all the time. There we go.
Okay. Well, again, information technology has been moved recently to the administrative side of the house. So we'll go through some of that. The major responsibilities in our information technology department is to oversee all of it. It's a comprehensive service that we have here, fully staffed on-house, and they maintain all of our infrastructure, hardware, and software. The full service support is brought to 11 locations with more than 200 users and over 500 devices. So our lean-lean team is handling quite a large load. And of course, as a reminder, it's 24/7 service because we have 24/7 employees. So we provide training and education of our staff on cybersecurity, software, and other components. That's a really, really important piece, because we can purchase it, we can maintain it, but we also have to educate our, our own staff on proper utilization. Going to add some more major accomplishments here, obviously besides the awards that we discussed, but the IT as a whole, we're able to do infrastructure upgrades on the core networking devices. You might remember when that occurred, because we really needed to. We were able to migrate some additional software for certain city applications. That's proved some cost savings and efficiencies. We continued our server upgrades as a place on our replacement schedule and desktop and laptop replacements as scheduled. They were able to also get the dash cam hardware and software for the police department taken care of. Looking forward to 2025 and 2026, there's still going to be some things that look the same, because it's a large organization and it's going to be some more infrastructure upgrades for more core networking. We're not finished yet on some of our network pieces. Definitely need to have time to renew those. We have got some additional cybersecurity initiatives that we're taking on, more device management software that will be implemented. We're going to be doing more upgrades on, on our servers. Again, as our utilization has gone up in the past five years, we've needed to upgrade substantially. Moving everything digitally has been good for efficiency, but it is also requiring some more investment in this department. More desktops and laptops, especially with the rollout of moving over as required to the support of Microsoft Windows 11. And then making sure we get the training center for police up and running properly. We'll be looking at new phone hardware upgrades and then the addition of another full-time employee to maintain all of this.
What is our staff count?
At the end of the year, we'll be at four. So some of the challenges or changes that you'll be seeing is that, again, we're moving to that in-house specialist model to better pivot and support the needs of our organization. As that technology continues to evolve, the software support and purchases will continue to evolve to meet these changes. In some cases, we see reductions, because the software is no longer new or there's alternates that we can provide. And in other ways, our consumption of technology and the software and the hardware has continued to grow at an exponential rate through the organization. So there's going to be changes in the budget that are, reflect that. And of course, we continue to work with city staff to ensure that everyone has the tools and the user interface you need to ensure productivity. IT is, of course, a business partner to all the other departments. So it's not just best IT practices that we're going to try to implement. It's making sure that we are continuing to meet each department and each user where they're at to make sure that they can effectively do their job. And then, again, here's your budget slide. You'll see that difference being moved from contractual services to personnel services as that pivot to an in-house model is reflected in 2026. But otherwise, again, understanding that salaries overall are in that best-guest estimate that we're utilizing, we're maintaining a fairly flat structure moving into 2026.
On the commodities and supplies, is that a split between just increased costs and a project or two?
It, it was actually moving from the contractual services. Some things were bundled into the contractual services that will be split between personnel and commodities. So in our, in, in the contractuals, they offered some of those things as portion of that. So it got split up.
One more before the break. Meridian Center.
I was like, we're, it's only 8:30.
I know, we're going fast.
We're going really fast.
Do we need a break? We'll just continue on.
Okay. Meridian Center for your 2026 budget. The major responsibilities, of course, include providing full-service event center abilities here in the community for everyone that would like to use those. They schedule, plan, and execute these client events, and of course, keeping up with the daily maintenance and operations of the building. 2024, as you might remember, was a big transition year for us in staff. So some of the accomplishments were the items that were very large to do with a very limited staff. And you'll see those listed here, including the Corks, Cooks, Corks, and Kegs event, the high school proms for Newton and Heston, hosting the Kansas Historic Preservation Conference, the golf reception for HF Sinclair. And then one of the large pieces that was quite a point of pride was the 400-person plated dinner for Heartland Pregnancy Care Center. That was on a very shoestring staff, and they're very proud that they could pull that off. So there are a couple other big holiday parties and celebrations. But we did hire a new operations manager at the end of summer and are looking to have some more stability in the staffing, looking forward. Looking forward to '25 and '26, some of the goals include to develop and implement standard operating procedures and best practices for all stages of events. The center's been running for about 15 years, and as you know, went from camper management to the city and then a pandemic and a few other things. So we're looking to clean some of those things up and make that for ensuring efficiencies that continue to have sales goals that would consistently average 12 events per month. Looking at a 2025 revenue goal at $34,000 a month. That goal is set to be able to cover operations so that the city subsidy would only be for the building itself. That is a goal. Probably won't be able to meet it, but again, trying to take off some of the city subsidy for this. Work to create a more positive image in the community, again, through that public trust and communications as the community is as a whole. Wanted to develop an improvement plan that will take care of those updates for the interior and exterior needed items. Again, the building is coming of its own age here pretty soon, and we're going to need to continue those modifications and items.
One of the things we did, you'll notice in the admin budget, was we put more money into the MIR for the Meridian Center this year. It has been needed to be done for quite a while, but this year we could, because we don't have the golf course debt. So you'll see that in there.
And that kind of, that follows up on our maintaining and existing our building maintenance funds, so that we keep our buildings in the best possible shape we can. We're looking to roll out a new menu to keep it updated. Try to keep online presence and a branding with the social media account. There's a lot of day-to-day items that have not been replaced since the inception of the Meridian Center, and that includes the China Glassware Service Bear. So all of these things are coming due. They would like to do an anniversary celebration for the 15th anniversary in 2026. Implement that improvement plan and then kind of look ahead for the next 15 years so that we can continue with maintenance and equipment. And then up their revenue goal in 2026 to $38,000 per month. Probably need to update the audiovisual system in 2026. And then the goal would be, if revenue's coming in higher, to also add another full-time employee to manage the new growth. So that's the picture looking forward there. Some of the challenges and changes include a continued struggle to recruit staff for serving positions. One thing we've done in 2024 is we offer this position as a temporary part-time position through the city itself. But we still utilize a lot of temp staffing, because sometimes that's what we need to be able to do to increase. If you're going to have a 400-person plated dinner, you're going to need quite a lot more staff for the evening than we would be able to onboard through the city. Like everyone else, the cost of goods here is really significant. Beef and eggs and some of those really core pieces are going up, as you might have seen in restaurants or other items. And so we have to manage that cost of good without pricing further than, you know, the willingness to pay or the ability to pay. And then the other thing that's been a really big challenge is catching up on previous deferred maintenance. There was quite a lot of that. We're making really good strides, but that's going to be a continual piece. And here in the budget, you'll see that that transfer, we are asking for more transfers for operation in the 2026 budget to be able to be a little bit more flush as we ramp up revenues. You'll see most of that going to what our personnel service line, again, to be fully staffed. The previous years have been chronically understaffed to be able to maintain that sales goal, so.
And this transfer is from ECO Devo.
Right.
It's been one that's been in, in effect since inception.
When we looked through, Danielle and I had to get our minds kind of wrapped around this, this project and do a lot of research this summer during some of our, our changes in our staffing. And we looked through the original pro forma, and the original pro forma from more than 15 years ago had an ongoing operational support of $330,000 from the city to maintain operations. So we're trying to wean off of that plan.
What is the staffing on that? So this increase isn't the FTE, this is the staff needed to support those events, the part-timers and such?
It, it is, but it also brings in a, oh, sorry, I'll look at it here. So it has a full, full-time operations manager, a full-time event sales manager. It has a 30-hour chef, a 30-hour prep cook, and then the temporary staff in that calculation, which is about as low as you can reasonably run the event center. The ask would be that if events came in higher and they were able to get that, that they would want another. We used to be, I think, an administrative assistant or another kind of assistant position. It would probably assist the event and sales manager to be able to be another hand on deck to process things during events if the.
Was it 30, what did you say about the 30?
A chef and a prep cook. That is just shoestring thin.
And they've been doing it.
Right.
But it, yes, not sustainable.
And you can tell at the chamber breakfast and everything, it looked, you're starting to see some familiar faces with the part-timers. So that's kind of nice to see, because used to, it was a revolving door.
Well, and one of the things that we're able to do when we bring them on at the city is because we have to pay, you know, that additional fee when you use a temp service, we're able to pay them a little bit more than they're making through the temp service when we bring them on as our own. And our, it has been our operations that if you stay with us in that role for enough years, you do actually move up your steps annually, even though you're working just part-time. And so we do that with like our, our school traffic.
Guards.
Crossing guards and some of those places. So there's some opportunity for rewards for staying with us and maintaining that. But when they do come on through us, we, they, we make them go through the poet and the pre-employment physical and the full background check. And so we really have some really high-quality staff members if they're able to hold on to that. So again, trying to maintain, the more we have staff that know the building, know the operations, we can continue to build in efficiencies and effectiveness.
The 30 hours employee?
Two of them, yes.
So there's.
The chef.
Qualify then for benefits?
Yes.
Because they're like full-time employees as far as qualifying for benefits?
Yes.
You're not paid, okay.
Any other questions on the Meridian Center?
Are we at risk of retaining those folks because they are only 30 hours and not 40 hours compared to market?
It sure helps to have the benefits added. That's why we added the benefits. It really does help.
So that was a recent change? You took them?
On one of them, on the prep cook, it was. We did not have that benefit for them.
And, and I think that, so the greatest thing with the 30, the way our, our system is set up with the 30-hour employee, they can work up to 40 if the work is there, so, without occurring overtime. So that allows us to have the flexibility. They know that if the, if the events get booked, that they could become 40-hour employees. But we're, we're not held to paying them for, to coming up with 40 hours of work. So I think right now, it's a really good, happy medium. We still have a few other employees in other departments that are the 30-hour benefited. So currently, it's a happy medium.
Thank you.
Can I say something real quick?
Of course. I want to share, just from experience, because when I saw this budget and I saw the transfer and the subsidy, and we started kind of digging into, is this acceptable? Is this, is this what we thought it would be? Should it be less? Should it be more? And I, from what we've read and what we've, what we have looked into, I believe the commission at the time and the commission since then has agreed that the benefits of having an event venue, that, you know, this beautiful center that is a place where we can have so many things and subsidizing it with sales tax outweigh the cost of, you know, that, that, that $200,000 that we're, that we're doing. So that's a commission decision, and I want to make sure that you, you are aware of that going forward, that this, this, this endeavor will be supported with sales tax going, I mean, it needs it. So just putting it out there, every, every year, you're going to hear it from us. I just want you to be aware of that. But it is a wonderful, a wonderful venue. And Michael, under Rebecca's leadership, has been made fully aware and understands, especially, and he knows from his experience, I'm going to do everything I can to try and make this in the black. I mean, that's the ultimate goal. Like, we, we want to be able to say, you know, we don't need to transfer this year. And he, he's working very hard at that. And it's requiring spending a little money to make us a little more marketable. You know, you have these brand-new venues going up, and they're beautiful, and what can we provide? And how can we stand out so that you come and book our, our event here? So we are spending a little money in this year and next year. I just want to share that.
Next, we have Convention and Visitor Bureau, which is Rebecca.
Yeah. Do I get points for being so far ahead? All right. So just as a quick reminder before we get too much into. So just as a quick reminder before we get too much into the responsibilities and duties, a couple, a few years ago in 2022, this body looked at our CBB functions and our transient guest tax revenues and worked with staff to find a good fit to making sure that we could accomplish a lot of tasks with the current revenues that we bring in. Convention and Visitors Bureau tasks are funded by transient guest tax, which is what happens when you stay at a hotel or use an Airbnb, they pay that portion over. So we, that, we're very, very, very vested in CBB operations to continue to drive hotel nights because that is a direct funding source. It had always been a little bit tight because we do utilize a portion of the transient guest tax revenues to pay off the bond payment at the Meridian Center, actually. And that will expire in 2031, it will be retired in 2031. But until that moment comes, we wanted to try to get the most bang for the buck, so to speak. And due to a staff opening, we looked at the functionality and the best return on investment, and you all came to the decision that we were going to fund this at a 50% position. So our Convention and Visitors Bureau is really only a .5 FTE. Jen Lehman serves as that, but she also serves as our staff person for Newton Main Street to be able to fill up the other 50% of the time. And that's paid, as you saw earlier, through the administration side. So we get a lot of work and effort and projects without having to have a very high staffing cost. And so far, that's been very good for us. We may have to look at that in the future, again, if we're continuing to grow, that we might need more than just a half of a person, but that has been able to bring us to a really good fiscal position. So as a CBB, this position and this office is responsible for providing resources and advertising for tourists, residents, regional visitors, and bringing in that tax revenue. A lot of the tax revenue that's going to come through a CBB is really in sales tax. But again, while that's important to us and it's important to the community, what drives our numbers is going to be that transient guest tax in those hotel rooms. So that's a very important piece for us. And then, of course, working to build that community engagement and pride. In a community our size, hometown pride and that hometown feel is a big selling point. We hear it all the time at professional conferences, at regional gatherings from the Kansas Department of Commerce. We're not Chicago, we're not New York. People aren't coming for those pieces, but they are coming to have a wonderful day or wonderful weekend here in Newton and get to see what it's like to live here and be a part of small-town America. So we really work to, to build into that. We could go to the next slide. In 2024, we had some pretty fun accomplishments, continued to build relationships with the area attractions, museums, hotels, and restaurants. And again, you saw, I saw all this when Jen came to give her annual report, so I won't belay her too many of these points. Tried to continue with that CBB event marketing grant. The grants for 2025 have actually already been awarded through the CBB board. Started to build relationships with area agritourism. The state let us know that we are the regional connectivity point for agritourism, and so that's a really great thing to do to continue to add to people's things to do in the area. Hopefully, they'll go and maybe visit a couple of places, but stay here for the night before they head back home. And continuing to grow social media accounts and use of the Choose Newton Community Calendar. So again, we've had a lot of really good momentum by utilizing that one cohesive branding. So what's come from the Communications Department is a Choose Newton brand, as we've been able to put a lot of these initiatives that you'll see in community development and in CBB and in some of the other places into that brand so that we can continue to build that momentum, and we're not divying for our own space in, in that awareness and that communication. Looking forward for '25 and '26, some of the goals and the objectives for the CBB would be to increase transient guest tax revenue. That can be by helping make sure that a conference comes to town and stays here and books up. It can be continuing to build the relationships with the hotels and figuring out what they need. It can be marketing the hotels, but that's a very, very key point in this. We are applying for a Historic Preservation Storytelling Grant to build out the walking tours with more of a podcast-type approach, a listening, interactive piece. So if that's awarded, that will be a big undertaking. Launching the new branded Choose Newton website, which is where the CBB activities sit. The beginning of the concert series at the library. Continuing to grow that marketing grant for events, it's, has had a lot of positivity. Potentially creating a new Christmas event, continuing to support the other local events in town. Building day trip itinerary so people don't have to think about what they could do or see when they come here, they kind of have an idea. Continuing to update our Travel Kansas listings, those get used very, very, very frequently. Potentially assisting businesses and updating their Google listings, so when you're in town, that your Google listing is accurate. And then continue to develop that storytelling through photos and videos and reels because that really helps tell our story and make it more attractive to come and visit. And then again, partnering with a travel blogger, we've done that almost every year, and that does seem to pay off. Some challenges and changes looking forward, one of them is family budgets getting tired. We're hearing from a lot of the tourism industry that people seem to be feeling a little bit of a pinch right now, and then the tourism and travel decreases. We are hoping that because we might be a more regional destination, that maybe if you weren't planning to maybe have a staycation, you'll want to stay here and spend those funds here was, were the more affordable option. Again, that limitation's with that only half of a staff person. We're kind of seeing these projects grow and grow and grow past that capacity. And then looking in the budget, you'll see that we've set aside some additional funds to grow a Christmas event, to grow the marketing grant, and to increase the concert series for 2026. So then what you're seeing here in your proposed 2026, you'll see the revenues are estimated. Those revenue estimates come from what we've seen close to our actuals in 2024 so that we can maintain the best possible budgeting. You'll see the Personnel Services line being very low because, again, this is funding just a portion of a person. The Contractual Services line you'll see increasing for those items that I'd mentioned before, and then the commodities and supplies. And I have a question if the transfers, and the transfer line there currently as it sits, I believe is $130,000 that would go towards the bond payment at the Meridian Center, and then another $20,000 that we usually put to parks for their items because we can utilize, transient guest tax funds can only be utilized for certain things outside of strictly Convention and Visitors Bureau items, and one of those is for park improvements. There are things that would drive traffic. So we hear from a lot of our bloggers that come that we like to partner with, they definitely want to review our parks, so it's a very good match. So any other questions there?
Okay, 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 okay.
I wonder who in that thing did it?
I'm seven issues, I'm sorry. It is the person running it, not the computer. Now, we are a little ahead of time. Would you go ahead and want to start? And we'll have, keep our break on, at 9:50? Okay. I haven't, don't have your floaters, so hold up one second. We're going to go to wastewater, is that what you're ready for next?
Yes.
Okay.
So first, I invited the division heads to be here too. This is my kind of first year doing this. Done it a lot on the water wastewater side, so I could probably do that with my eyes closed, but with streets and parks and cemetery, I wanted to have some, some muscle back there. Yeah, so welcome Nathan, Hondo, and Frank.
You're going to have to close your PowerPoint.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, it's not letting me get in there. Did you have notes and stuff that you needed in there? Because you could do read-only.
I'm okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll start with wastewater, the wastewater division, composed of treatment and collections. We, we, we maintain over 100 miles of underground sewer sta, sewer pipe, eight lift stations. These carry all your waste from your washing and your dryer or washer and brushing your teeth and dishwasher, and it all, it all goes down the pipes and ends up at the wastewater plant. At the wastewater plant, we treat that per KDHE and EPA standards, and we, we generally come in well below what our permit asks us to do. So the folks out there do, take a lot of pride in what they do out there. Those standards are pretty strict, and we have to, to be very mindful of what we release back into the environment. This is a 24-hour-a-day, 365-day operation, so with the technology we have and the SCADA and the computer system, we're able just to work Monday through Friday, you know, eight, eight or 10-hour-a-day, but then they all carry an iPad and a pager, phone, whatever type of device so that if something does go haywire at 3:00 in the morning, they'll get that phone call. And lots of times they're able just to fix it right there in, in bed with their iPad, but there would be occasion they have to come out and move a pump or switch something around, so that's kind of what happens at the plants. Our accomplishments that we, that we had in 2024, the wastewater treatment plant, we replaced eight meters that measure flow. And when I say meter, they are meters, but you have to remember this is a wastewater plant, so there's a lot of solids and stuff that go through. So these aren't your typical like house meter, these are big meters. And they take quite a bit to get changed out, but they were due to be changed. And so we don't want our plant to end up kind of like it was prior to the remodel, where it just didn't get a lot of attention. And so we, we pay a lot of attention to try and get that done. We replaced all the diffusers in the Big Basin on a, I think they're on a five-year rotation, so we get those taken care of. Staff cleaned over 500,000 feet of sewer line in 2024. Our goal is to clean the entire town, anything eight inches and smaller, and then anything larger than eight inches, we, we have it, we have it done in, in three-year rotation. That, the fact that we are able to clean the whole town is kind of unique to us. Whenever we've been, you know, had insurance claims or something and, and adjusters come out, they're, they're amazed that we cleaned the whole town. Most cities don't. Most just do on a three-year rotation, which is what was required per KDHE, but we, we take a lot of pride in cleaning our whole city every year. And a lot of reasons for that is because we have older pipes, clay tile, and we've just found that we're, we're much better off and we get a, a whole lot less reports of backups and things of that nature, so we work really hard to do that.
Can you explain what's in the picture there?
Yeah, so that's the, you've been out to the wastewater plant?
Yes.
The Big Basin that you, everyone walks up on top of, and you see all the, the water that, that bubbles in there?
Yes.
That's emptied out, and they're in the bottom of that changing those diffusers. So tho, those are, we're looking down, that's about 30 feet down. And so there's, there's these little, there's rubber membranes on these arm, plastic arms that have holes in the bottom of it, so when the air pushes through there, it expands that rubber and it lets, it's got little tiny slits in it, and it lets that fine bubble come to the top versus a coarse hard bubble.
It kind of looks like they're standing and stuff, but they're.
They are.
They are, but it's not what you, it's not. It's the good stuff.
Okay, it's the bugs?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Is it an OSHA requirement that they be harnessed up like that?
They have to have safety harnesses on, because it's 30-foot down, and so they have to have.
Even, even though you've got sidewalls all the way around them?
Yeah, because it's a confined space that is not designed for continuous human oxygen.
Yeah, that makes sense, okay.
So, and that's why they have to go down in pairs too, so that if someone were to get hurt, the others could drag the retrieval winch over to them and get them up out of there. And then there's, there's people on top that have to watch the entire time too, so.
Can you educate me what a lift station is?
Sure. So if you think, so sewer, we, we want it to run downhill, right? We want to use gravity as much as we can. So when you put a sewer line in the ground, you put it with a slope so the water runs downhill. You get to a certain point where you, you have to lift that water back up, and the sewer plant's always generally located at the lowest part of town. There are some cities that don't have any lift stations, but with our system, it runs downhill till it gets so, so, so low that we have to lift it back up. I always say, you know, if you keep going downhill, you'll end up in China, but. So you come to a point where you have to lift it up, and so at that point, it comes to a lift station, and there's pumps there that then pump the water back up so that it can run downhill again, and we can utilize gravity.
Okay.
So if you had to pump it all the time, there's a lot of expense for pumping, a lot of maintenance that goes into pumping. So they're, they're very strategically positioned in our basins and in our, our community so that, and it's all part of the planning piece too, development. So when we're looking at developments that want to come in or whatever, we want to look at how much we're going to take on sewage-wise and then determine what has to go in as far as infrastructure to get it to the plant. So does that explain, Emily?
Country Club was fine until we had all the new development there, so then it had to get.
Yeah, well, I mean, Country Club was still working, but it was our oldest lift station, it'd been in since 1974. It was, it was slated to be replaced in a couple of years, but it kind of moved the process up when we put all those houses in there. So, so that was the next thing we did, replace Country Club Lift Station. Omni site, that is, help me out Nathan, it's just like a cell device.
The monitoring, give us alarms and event emergency.
It's similar to SCADA, but it's just a small cell device that goes on all the lift stations. So again, a lift station could go down at 2:00 in the morning, we'd get a phone call that we have to go out and get that repaired so that we don't, we don't want houses flooding and basements flooding, so. We upgraded all the Omni sites at all of our lift stations. You've probably heard us talk about, over the last couple of years, the changes in the CDL requirements. It's been a big deal, and it's been, we've looked at, we looked at many different options. We looked at buying a smaller truck, we looked at doing things like that, but with what we do and cleaning sewers, all staff in the water wastewater division have to have a CDL with tanker endorsement to drive that big combination truck. And that's the only efficient way to do it. And CDL, CDL costs have gone up. I think we're paying about $2,500 a person to get a CDL now. So it's, it's a struggle, it's a mandate that comes down from the government that they didn't really offer any way of funding it, so it's just something we have to follow. So that's kind of a theme throughout a lot of my presentation. A lot of these things apply to the water side, apply to parks and things like that, so. CDL was a big deal. Another thing that we've really leaned into this past year was utilizing GIS and, and for our field staff, we've really kind of been behind the curve a little bit. I, growing up in this industry, have always just been a map guy, like I need paper and maps, right? But there's a, there's a lot of efficiency to be had by using it through an iPad. It doesn't take as long to flip through papers, and so we've really leaned into, with help of engineering staff, to upgrade our maps, get them all on iPads. All of our staff this year will have iPads that they carry with them, so when they're going out to clean a sewer or there's a water main break, and sorry, I said that out loud, there, they can go to that map immediately and they can find where the valve is, they can find the infrastructure that they need to repair, to make those repairs. So we've put a lot of work into upgrading some software and being more efficient. So our goals for 2025, we want to continue making quick response to customer issues. I always, and this is maybe not the best thing to say, but I'm always a proponent of having a residency requirement, and that's primarily because of sewer. Water, if you have a water issue, sure, you're going to lose water, and we don't want to do that. We want to be as responsible with water as we can, but water can run down the street, but if you have a sewer backup and someone's basement's flooding, I don't want somebody living in Salina that has an hour to get here that doesn't count 3:00 in the morning when they're waking up to put their clothes on, another half hour for that. So it's. So it's important to me that we have a residency requirement from the sewer perspective because it happens. Basements flood, sewers get backed up. Ninety-five percent of the time, it's on the homeowner, but I still want to be able to respond to that as quickly as we can for customer service to our residents and help walk them through it if we can, so.
As risk manager, I get all, a copy of every time we have a sewer backup call come in. And I always read what happened, so I make sure it's not us. And it's always, they run to one side and check it and see if it's flowing. They run to the other street and see if it's flowing. And ninety-nine percent of the time, it's not us. Or we're flowing and it is on the consumer. But if we didn't, we, and they always put in there, this was cleaned two months ago. This was cleaned six months ago. So we're always in good standing with how they're doing the sewer. So it makes my job a lot easier when they do that. Now, sometimes we'll have, they'll get something out, but it was something that one of their neighbors put in and we can explain to them. We got a bunch of, you know, those rags out that don't dissolve or a diaper, you know, so it's never, it's not us. And that and that makes the insurance claims usually non-existent. So that helps a lot.
Makes sense.
Yeah, unfortunately, I can't control what people put down the sewer as much as I would like to. I just, I can't. People will do what they do. And so we, you know, by cleaning the sewers every year, I think we we had a lot of that stuff off, so. Again, we'll continue to working on reducing our backups. Like Donna said, when we get a call out for a sewer backup, we'll check both manholes between the homes. Even if it's flowing, we still run it. We still run it just to give assurance to the customer that there is nothing blocking this. We didn't hit a block, we didn't hit anything, so. And we talk them through, probably they need to have a plumber come out and look at what could be the potential issue on their end. Again, cleaning all lines and easements, that's a, is always a goal for us. And exceeding NPDS permit, that's the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System is what that acronym stands for. It's a federal mandated, regulated permit that we use that tell, that gives us guidance and tells us the rules and regulations of the limits of what we can dispose of in the creek. So, you know, we can only put X amount of phosphorus down there or X amount of solids and the oxygen content has to be a certain level. So we meet or exceed those requirements every month. So staff take a lot of pride, they do a lot of work out there to to make sure that the treatment is is occurring the way it needs to occur. Operational challenges, again, this will be a theme that you hear throughout all my presentations is the struggle to retain and recruit qualified staff. And with the the uncertainty of some of the stuff in the, at the federal government level, the tariffs and things that they're talking about, I mean, we we just don't know yet. We don't know. But we're we're just watching it because we could, you know, it could be a challenge. If the price of brass or piping or pumps and stuff get hit with some of this stuff, then it could increase some costs, so. And lead times, lead times has been a kind of a big deal since COVID. It seems like they just started getting caught up again and then now we have the, what's going on in the federal government at this point. So lead times have increased again. And then, as you can see on our little budget page here, we tried to to keep it about the same as we've always done. We did increase capital outlay a little bit. We have a couple of sewer manhole projects, relining, rehabbing some manholes that we want to consider to pay out of operating budget this year. And I think we can do a little bit at a time versus kind of a whole big project that would have to go out and be bonded. And so we're trying to just be a little more efficient with some of the stuff that we do through operating budget, so. Any questions on wastewater?
Do the transfers for admin?
We have them in there still, five hundred seventy thousand from wastewater. Hopefully, we can go another year without doing that.
Okay, ready to move on to?
Water?
Water? Okay, Water Division. So our major responsibilities, again, providing and delivering, maintaining systems. Customer service is a huge deal for us. We're committed to providing the best customer service we can twenty-four hours a day, three sixty-five, three hundred sixty-five days a year. We have two staff members that are on call every day. So if there's a a problem in the middle of the night, a water leak or something, on the distribution side, they carry a pager. The public will call nine-one-one, which is maybe a sidebar I could talk about here. But they call nine-one-one, nine-one-one will then call out dispatch, our staff, to go out and handle whatever it might be from a sewer collections deal to a water issue. One thing that I didn't have here in the budget, but it's kind of a sidebar, the nine-one-one piece, I would like to find a better way that we can communicate that to residents. Because growing up as a child, you you're taught that don't call nine-one-one unless it's an emergency. Well, if you have water blowing, that's an emergency, you know? And so I don't know how we change that message to help people understand it's okay to call nine-one-one. Because I don't know how many times when I sat in Nathan's position that I would come in on a Monday morning and I'd have a phone call saying, hey, we've had an issue all weekend. And I would say, you can call nine-one-one. Well, no, that's emergency. I go, this is an emergency. So maybe you could pass that on to, to just make it known that nine-one-one is okay to call in a water and sewer emergency. And that's, that's what we would expect so that we can get ahold of the right people to go and take care of the problem. Major accomplishments, so if you recall the lead and copper stuff that we went through last year, we had to make, take an inventory of the entire city, every service line. We did that. The rules continue to evolve on this lead and copper rule that the state is, or the EPA is mandating. We have just learned that when they originally put the rule out, if you were over fifty thousand people in population, you had to have a link to the spreadsheet for anyone to go look at it. That's still a rule, but they're adding a caveat that they still want it on our CCR, that we have the ability, we provide the ability for any customer to come in and look at the spreadsheet, which is fine, I think it's great. The problem is that spreadsheet is a living document and we have to update it every time we find lead or every time we find galvanize, we have to update that spreadsheet. So to put a link online, and Aaron and I had talked a little bit about this yesterday, to put a link online to that, I think becomes rather cumbersome because you're having to change it all the time. So I think what we're going to do on our CCR is we'll just put an address for the service center that if somebody wants to see the spreadsheet, they can certainly come to the service service center and we'd be happy to show them that document. So the lead and copper rule, you're going to hear more from me about that. This is a really a big deal and it continues to evolve. And I don't, I don't have a good feel for where it's going to end up yet. But it's, it's pretty major. In twenty twenty-four, we also converted all of the residential and commercial water meters to radios with the exception of about fifty, is that right Nathan? And the ones that we didn't convert were were like bigger meters that are are really expensive and they're more like a backup meter for the trailer park. Like trailer park might have two meters. And if you put these meters in, then you immediately have a warranty issue and a battery life issue. And so we didn't feel like it was worth that, the return on investment to spend that money on a meter that really just sits there for a for a backup reason. So even though all but about seventy-five of our meters in town are radio and we don't have to go out and physically read those anymore, there's still seventy-five that we, it's our route that we go read some meters. But this was a, this was a big deal, this is a lines up with the strategic plan too, to try and get some more efficiency and consider moving to gallons versus cubic feet. We're not there yet. We have the radios in place, but there's still probably three thousand meters that we would need to replace the meter itself. Because when we made this move to get to the fixed base where it was all run through an antenna, it didn't require changing the meter necessarily, we just had to update the radio. And so this has been a goal of mine since I was hired in two thousand and ten to kind of get to this point. And it was a super exciting for me because I wanted to do it in ten years, it took about fifteen. But when we got here, I was really excited for this. And then, then I was promoted to Director of Public Works and now I don't get to have my hands on it near as much.
And just to clarify, because I know you've told me, because I think I was a little slow on the uptake, converting to, from cubic feet to gallons, isn't just us making a little change in a spreadsheet when we send out a bill. It's actually starting at that meter, right?
It changes the meter. So the meters are little computers now. So we can go up to the meter, well, we can, at this point, we can link into it through the computer and we can change the settings to say we want this to read in cubic feet or gallons. And so it'll make that jump. Now there's, that's the high level view of saying how it's done, but.
But we don't have to change the hardware, we just have to change the firmware or the programming on it.
Correct, yeah.
That is so much better than digging.
Yeah, the only hardware that we would have to change are those three thousand meters that still need to be upgraded, so. But we're, at least we're, at this point, we're able to read them without boots on the ground. And it's been really good. Eventually, I want to put together a presentation for the commission on this process and Donna and I have talked a little bit about it. We've noticed, so with this new system, we, it pulls every fifteen minutes, the reeds? So the reeds are pulling every fifteen minutes to the, to the base. Because of that, our technician will come in the morning and they'll see, hey, there's a lot of usage on this house in the last twenty-four hours.
Oh, I've had them in my driveway.
Okay.
You have a leak?
No.
No, I filled the pool.
We would much rather hear that than than you call us later and say, hey, why didn't anybody tell me this, right?
And then when I got the well, they're like, you're watering, something's wrong with your meter.
Yeah.
We got an irrigation.
Yeah, so.
Then they know.
There's some, there's some really good pieces to this that allow us to look at those things and catch leaks faster. And again, that goes to our customer service and helping our customers see things quicker so that they're not having to pay those, those higher bills because they knew they had a toilet running. You know, some, you know, it just, it happens and it is what it is. But with this, I think our our ability to respond has has increased greatly and I think it's a positive.
What's it going to take to finish up those last meters and switches to gallons? That's, that's on my.
Yeah.
I want that.
Yeah, it's money, but it's, and hard work. It takes time to do it, but it's, it's in the plan, we're, they're moving.
Yeah.
Three years?
We're, we're hopeful, did we order enough, we're about half. Yes, so this year in twenty twenty-five, we ordered about fifteen hundred meters. And then twenty twenty-six, we'd get the other fifteen hundred and so getting those installed. And then we, then we have to go back and get all the updates too, so all the meters.
Okay, so the three thousand is in a programming, the three thousand is a hardware.
Those are hardware, yeah, three thousand meters are hardware.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was getting excited, I'm like, we're so close. I'm, I would find you interns out of WSU to come and program meters over the summer, I mean.
Yeah, we're, we're probably a couple of years out, but we're working really hard to try and get them done, so.
This all, also open, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead. We also, this opens that our utility customers can, one day, see their stuff online and see what's happening, real time.
So after we get all the meters hardware to the same level, then we can program, reprogram everything.
At once, yeah.
Gallons at once.
And we'd have to do it all at once because we don't want, it would be a nightmare for billing to say, well, this half of town's gallons.
We couldn't do that, yeah.
I just wanted to mention that when we sat down and talked about some of the strategic goals, commission made it very clear that this was at the top of the list. So this goal is actually in our strategic goal as a, as a, as a, an item that we wanted to complete before the end of twenty twenty-six. Now, we're almost a year in and it looks like it might be twenty twenty-seven, but the goal is still twenty twenty-six. Before Suzanne left, we questioned how we could make this work without having every single meter in. Because we are waiting, if I'm not mistaken, we are waiting to put in the bigger meters towards the end.
Yes and no.
Okay.
But the three thousand is the big piece right now.
Okay. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't count it out. We are cautiously optimistic that we, we, we are putting it at the top of our list to make sure we get this done.
Let me make sure I understand.
Sure.
So when you started meter changes, you didn't necessarily have to change meters, you changed radios?
No.
No, I thought I heard, okay.
Yeah.
So, so the three thousand is still how many new meters you have to replace?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay.
So originally, our meter change out program, I mean, that's our cash register, right? So our, our meter change out program, when I started in two thousand and ten, is when I said, let's, let's start moving towards a more efficient system. The meters we purchased prior to my coming in two thousand and ten were still an analog meter. They were like a clock, they were mechanical, they had moving parts inside of them that spun, it spun a little turbine and then it registered on the meter how much you used, okay? Now, the technology, when those, as those started becoming pretty popular, you could add a radio to it and then you could just do drive-bys.
Okay, that's what I was.
Or you could, or you could do a tap, where you'd walk by and you'd tap it and it would, it would give you a reading. But then I wanted to move to the newer technology yet, which is the, it's an iPer meter, that's what we call it. And it has new moving parts, it's basically magnets, right? And the water flows through there and it takes a reading from the differential in the magnets. That meter is the one that's a little computer and it can be changed program wise. The other meters, and so one of the, one of the issues you deal with is, do you want to just do a whole change out or do you want to look at meters? I use the, I use the example, the Brady Bunch lives over here and they, they use a hundred thousand gallons a month. And little Mrs. Jemins lives over here and she uses a hundred gallons a month. This meter is going to wear out quicker than this one. So do I change this one for the sake of changing it or do I try to get as much life out of this meter I can? And so that's how our meter program kind of started. And we started evaluating usage where they were at because mechanical meters would wear out and the, the newer meters, they don't wear out from a mechanical side, but the battery life is what is your driving factor on those. Does that help explain?
Are they serviceable? The battery is serviceable on them?
Not yet, no, they're kind of a disposable thing. We're hopeful that technology will get there, but.
Are those radio or they still drive by or IOT?
They're radio. You can do either or, but we've kind of stuck with the radio piece because we put in the antennas at the towers. And so that was kind of the, that was the direction that we chose to go.
What, when we do the, you're talking about the reprogramming of the meters and have customers be able to view their, I guess, usage online, would they be getting some kind of like update every month or weekly or something about like how much water they've used or decrease, you know, they use less water this month than they did the month before? I mean, that's kind of, kind of, Evergy kind of does that?
I'm not sure exactly how the software works yet because we haven't really jumped off that, that cliff yet. I, I know that there's like a dashboard that they could go to daily and look at. I don't know if it puts out.
Notifications.
Notifications or anything.
Oh, anytime, it'd be on them instead of us sending it to them. A lot of people don't want us sending them all this stuff.
Everybody doesn't have a folder with the city water bills ready to respond to any question or whatever?
Hopefully, they can, in, as it evolves, they'll be able to opt in and we'll be able to send out automatic things if they want. You know, but we, we're not there yet because we just haven't looked into it because we haven't been able to do it. So we've had other fish to fry, so, but we will do as soon as.
And could you remind me again, I know, I should know this off the top of my head, but the cost for these meters, as you split them over the two years, is that something that's going to be reflected in this budget or is that being paid out of a capital or an equipment reserve?
It's in the operating budget and we have a line item about, was it three or four years ago, Donna, that we created a line item just for meters?
Yeah, and we have been transferring two hundred fifty thousand over to help from the reserves to pay for some of these meters.
Yeah, and we, so we did that to kind of get to the antenna point because we've been putting money back for several years to kind of. Yeah, and we, so we did that to kind of get to the antenna point because we've been putting money back for several years to kind of get here. I think at this point, it becomes maintenance out of the operating budget that we, you know, make our purchases for meters and things of that nature. Anything else on meters? So another few accomplishments that we've worked through this past year. We started operating the new tank over on First Street and they've demoed the old one. And the second new tank is, has been erected. They're, we're getting pretty close. We're hopeful that this gets filled and tested in about mid-June. As long as everything keeps moving the way it is, weather holds for us. So this has been one of those projects that I just can't wait to get off. It's, it's been that whole area since I started in 2010. We've been working hard to get to where we're at, so I'm excited for that one to be done too. Again, CDL is the same thing. It kind of goes because our staff, they're, they're, they're trained on both sides of the, of the aisle here. So they have to know sewer and water and they have to be able to drive that truck. And again, we're utilizing the software to be more efficient in, in the stuff that we do. Our goals and objectives for 2026, again, we want to get both those tanks at First Street operating. We want to work with utility billing on the fixed space meter risk, reading efficiency and getting the word out on that. And then again, trying to maybe do a side presentation for commission. And then just continue with our customer service. We take a lot of pride in trying to be the best responding maintenance utility there is. We want to outdo Evergy and Kansas Gas and all the rest of them. Operational challenges and budgetary changes, again, struggle for recruiting qualified staff, getting them certified. It's just, it's an ongoing deal. And then just concerns over potential terrorists and lead times. Just kind of a big deal in the maintenance world when it comes to trying to get brass and fittings and pipe and all the stuff that goes along with what we do and water and wastewater.
One of the things too, talking about good customer service, we're one of the last agencies that you can actually talk to and gripe at when you, something goes wrong. Evergy's all, you know, it's all computer on the phone, even on the phone, you can't get hold of any live person. So we get a lot of that here. So we try, his department tries, utility billing tries real hard just to be the best customer service people we can be because they can still talk to us and they can still get upset with us. But we can hopefully lead them over that point and get to a good resolution.
And talking with the person on the phone is the best, is always the best.
And I know when utility billing has some issues and we haven't explained it, the people are, still aren't happy. We call Nathan or Ed and they will talk to the person directly and so they are very accessible.
Too much automation makes us impersonal. It really does. And I think that just needs to be kept alive. So I would say thank you for having that at the top of your mission.
Certainly, certainly. And then you can see on our budget sheet here, again, we tried to stay similar. The capital outlay was another, just like in the sewer side, we have a couple of EFDs and stuff that need to be thinking about. We already had one fail and it was found out that the switchgear that it, that it's connected to is obsolete now. So we had to get a remanufactured one. So we're just trying to, to head this off and just take care of our operating budget versus an emergency issue. And then we're going to Donna and saying, how do we pay for it? So that's why that increase in capital outlay is through operating budget to try and head off some of those issues that we know are going to happen.
It is 9:35. Would you all like to take a break? We're about 20 minutes ahead of time. Would you like to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, let's take a break. How long was our break? 20 minutes. So we'll be back up here, let's be up around 10.
Okay.
So major responsibilities, we continue to perform routine maintenance on all the streets and bridges, alleys, signals, signs. Any infrastructure related to that, our staff also is responsible for storm sewer repair and maintenance. Staff respond to clear streets during weather evented, weather related events, like when we had the windstorm in May. Half of the town staff was out helping get that roads opened up and cleared up, same as snowstorms. They're pretty dedicated to come in and start fighting that snowstorm as soon as they can when it makes sense, and so.
Isn't that the coolest picture though?
Yeah.
I love that picture. And I heard one of them call, they call each other snowfighters?
Yep.
I think that's cool.
We do snow fighter training every year. And we go through how to plow, how not to do certain things when you, when you open up your salt gate, when you don't open up your salt gate. Going through the intersections, Frank, you can add to this if there's. Yeah. So it's, snow is, we've had, we had a pretty good year this year with snow, so we got several events that we worked through and it all worked out pretty good. The first one, I think, we struggled a lot with the ice that, that fell first, but, but we got through it, so. And then Street Division also performs a lot of tasks for other divisions. If, if recently we, we poured a sidewalk over here for Police Division, Police Department for their training facility from, from their parking lot to the, to the door. So, Street Division does a lot to help other divisions and we're happy to do so. Major accomplishments, again, CDLs, we encourage staff to have CDLs, they're not all required to have them. Because a lot of our equipment there are smaller that, that does not require a CDL. We do have a, a large tandem dump truck that does require CDL, so we encourage all of them to have CDLs. There's a handful of positions that are required, if I'm getting that right, right? So we do encourage them to have CDLs, it gives them, you know, when we're looking at backfilling positions or succession planning. If they have that CDL right now, it kind of gives them a leg up, so we encourage that to get those CDLs so they can move into different positions. We assisted with multiple community events this past year, completed multiple downtown improvements. Repaired 1,788 square yards of concrete and roadways. And we repaired three ADA ramps and we've inspected all of our traffic signals. Traffic signals is one of those things that I'll get to here in a little bit, but we are looking pretty hard at how we budget to replace those, so we'll kind of give them that a little bit later. So 2025 goals and objectives. We continue to utilize Street Saber and it aids in our maintenance strategies. If you recall, last year, the year before, I don't remember which, we had a company come in and they did LiDAR of all of our streets. And so they took all that information, we upload it into this program called Street Saber. And then it extrapolates, we can tell if there's no maintenance done to this section of roadway in 10 years, this is what the rating could be. And so it's been really useful in how we're now tackling our, our road rehabs, the mill and overlay projects and the bigger things that we may need to get a contractor out for. So it's been really positive, again, trying to utilize the technology that's available, come into the 21st century and just do a lot better job of trying to be more efficient. So we have upgraded our school zone lights from on Old Main Street. And our hope is to upgrade all of those, right, to the, where we can do it with Bluetooth? Yeah. So that's in our plan to try and get done this year. Install battery backup at First and Meridian on that traffic signal, perform annual maintenance in Area One. Create financial plan for traffic signal replacement, and this is what I was referring to earlier. Our signals are 40 years old.
Downtown.
Downtown, they're 40 years old and most of those are designed to last about 20 years. The technology in our signals is, is 40 years old. A lot of the wiring and stuff has started to become a little brittle. So we're trying to figure out a way that we can put back dollars or build a project that would consider replacement of those signals. And they're all linked together, which kind of makes the project a little more cumbersome. And then with the railroad and Fifth Street, that has to be, those have to talk. So when the, when the arms come down for the railroad, Fifth Street has to shut down. So it's kind of a big deal, we started talks this year in budget.
And I bet out a heart attack, how much, how expensive it's going to be.
Yeah. And because here's the catch, is when you touch a signal like that in that intersection, you have to do every corner. Which means you have to look at ADA ramps, you have to look at the placement of PEDs. Are they upgraded to, for the near blind or for the near deaf? There's a whole litany of things that have to be addressed when you look at those signals. And because they're all tied together, it really makes it a little bit tough to figure out how we're going to do it. But we're working through and trying to figure out how to move forward with that. And you'll hear more from me in years to come to try and figure out how we go about getting some, some replacement figured out on this, this piece. Yeah. So the SS4A grant, which we applied for, we're still waiting to hear back. That, that grant, we're hopeful that what it would do would provide us a plan that we can then use to move forward with some of the signals. And the pedestrians and all the stuff that goes with it, because there was one thing, and I may butcher this, and if I do, forgive me. We had a fatality at Eighth and Main some years back, prior to me. But because of that, we can use some of that in, in applying for this grant to show the importance of pedestrians and signals and stuff like that. So that's kind of where we're going with SS4A and we're hopeful that, that we'll get something there. But as you know, there's no guarantee when it comes to the grant monies and things of that nature.
Remind me, is the Safe Streets For All, is, was that a grant for the plan or was that a grant for implementation?
For the plan, it's a grant for the plan, yeah. But if you have a plan, then sometimes that's easier to get stuff kicked off the ground and moved for construction, so, and design. And then we'll potato form maintenance in Area Two. Some of our challenges, again, creating a funding plan for the replacement of the downtown traffic signals. Recruitment and retaining qualified staff, and then just potential rising commodity costs, fluctuation of fuel and things of that nature. So those are, like I said, a theme throughout all my presentations. And then you can see on our budget page, we, we tried to just remain as close to what we could from years past, so. Questions on streets? Okay, I'm moving to shop.
Transfers?
Yeah, when transfers.
Pardon? On the street?
Yeah.
There's transfers that go into their MRR, their, their equipment reserve. They transfer that at each year.
Oh, okay.
And also they get money transferred to them from sewer because they help with the stormwater.
Okay.
Which is really a sewer function, but we don't have a stormwater utility. So the street people do that and then the sewer. So, the street people do that and then the sewer fund pays them back for their work.
Storm sewer.
Storm sewer, I'm sorry.
Yeah, storm sewer.
What you'll see is you, you don't see a revenue line for street. But the transfers, in parentheses, is transferred out to their equipment reserve.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's more, more money coming in than going out, but they don't have their own revenue line, so that's how we show it.
Okay.
Because they're in the general fund and, like people say, it's, it's a, it's a black hole, because none of those departments get to see any revenue because it all comes in the top.
Okay. I, thank you, I just wanted to know where that, yeah.
Nope, that's fine, great question.
Okay, shop. So. I think it's great that our organization has a very robust shop. It enables us to respond to emergencies. When stuff break down in the middle of a snowstorm, we can get a mechanic out there and help get something fixed or replaced. So, our goal is to continue providing maintenance and mechanic duties to the 300-plus fleet vehicles and, and small equipment and any items that we do that do need repair. We conduct predictive and preventative maintenance to, to all the city fleet. Provide the highest quality customer service primarily internally to other departments and divisions. We work hard to complete and conduct equipment troubleshooting, so that we're not having to send stuff out to another, another third party or something and pay additional money for some of that, so. And then responding to emergencies that would involve city fleet. So, that, that to me, that, that last bullet point is probably one of the, the highest, greatest positive things that, that I think come from our fleet division and our shop division. Is the ability to have someone that can be a Johnny on the spot with a toolbox. Major accomplishments this year, we rebuilt the, the brine truck, the pump. We saved $9,000 by not, by doing it in-house and not having to send it out. Another one is that we replaced the, the rear main on unit, that should be unit, not unite, but Unit 340. Saving $18,000 on that. We rebuilt an engine for the Parks Division tractor. Repaired the grapple truck during the windstorm and the cleanup, repaired loader bucket truck cylinders during May and the windstorm. And that, those are just big ones, I mean, these guys are, they can come fix a little trash pump for us in the middle of the afternoon that, you know, helps save us time, the water and wastewater time to, to fix or repair a leak. So, having, having this division is pretty powerful, I think, for, for our organization. And then, our goals would just be continue our maintenance and mechanical service to all of, everything. Customer service will be, is going to be at the top of the list and then just keeping all the vehicles, machinery and equipment in top working order. I don't think these slides are in here.
Yeah, there's a couple, it seems like a couple of the slides did not get printed into the book, so. When we're finished, will all of these, all of these get updated and put online with our agenda, so we can always get them out, if we need to get a couple of these in there.
And then, next slide, Donna. Yeah, and then, so you can see here, again, we just tried to stay in that same vein that we've been in the last few years, so.
All right.
And that's charged back to the departments needing.
Correct.
Yes.
That's good to see.
Yep. That's where all the fuel comes through as well, so they can fuel their, all the vehicles get fueled at the service center. When it's open, when it's closed, they do have backup with QuickTrip.
Yeah, only, only if the fuel islands were to go down for some reason, but we have, there's a fuel island, there's two fuel islands at the service center. There's one outside the gate and then one inside the gate, so PD, emergency services, everyone can get fuel at, you know, 2:00 in the morning if they need to.
We can buy in bulk and that helps.
Yeah. Okay.
Next, parks.
Okay, parks. Major responsibilities, our Parks Division and staff, they maintain all the parks. Rideaways, waterways, cemeteries, all amenities within those locations. We mow just under 600 acres of open space as part of that maintenance. Perform all the burials at three local cemeteries, they help with snow and ice removal. Our Parks Department is a wonderful partner with the streets, because parks will handle a lot of the parking lots and a lot of the public sidewalks. And it allows streets to focus on the roadways and things of that nature, so been a, a great partner in that way. They let, like street, they help with setting up special events that occur in the parks from picnic tables to anything that would be needed as, you know, renting out shelters or things of that nature. And then they clean all the public restrooms in all the parks and open and close those during the season, so that people have the amenities when they go out to enjoy our parks. Our major accomplishments for this past year was continued to keep all the facilities mowed, trees planted, landscapes looking good and staying on top of weed issues. We moved our operations to the new facility this past year and I think, I think we've kind of tried to, we're about settled in there. It's really nice. We plan to hold our Public Works luncheon this year, we're going to hold it at the Parks Division. So, we're all kind of excited to, to go out there and have the, have lunch. We installed two new pickleball courts at the old tennis courts, repaired several playground ADA surfaces. Repaired damages to Meridian Center. We've been Tree City USA for 49, or, for 49 years, correct, yeah. And then, Tree City of the World, this is our fifth year for Tree City. Goals and objectives.
Little guy on the totem pole gets to prop up a slide.
You do what you can, you know? Yeah.
No, they don't.
And then in the heat and stuff, they're a little flexible, so. So, we've, goals this year, installed and replaced playground equipment. We've worked through a MRR for our playground equipment and we've been adding to that. So, we're hopeful to kind of get that to a, a level that we can do a better job of keeping up with replacement of playground equipment. Because it's, it's really important for, for young families and things like that to have those amenities and quality of life. And, I mean, my kids are married and, and off now, but I have grandchildren now, so we like to go play at the park with Emmett, so. I think they're important. Navigate through the growing season, that's always a struggle in the springtime, you get sunshine, you get rain and vegetation explodes. And so, we get a little bit behind in the springtime and we do our very best because we're trying to open up splash parks and events that are happening and trying to get everything done and then mowing. And our summer help doesn't generally start until the end of May. And then we have our, our, our Super Bowl is Memorial Day for the cemeteries, because we want to make that as pristine as we absolutely can. So, we put a lot of effort and focus on that. And then, once we get summer help in here, then we, we get a better handle on the growing season, so. We continue to maintain all of our city properties at a high level. Playground equipment, install a new columbarium at cemetery and then continue to maintain a full staff throughout the year, which has been a challenge, to say the least, so. Operational challenges, again, playgrounds, we, we need to get the replacements, need to happen before they become unsafe. We do have two, two certified playground inspectors and so we utilize those guys and their knowledge on that stuff, so that we're, we're not putting ourself, you know, liable for someone that gets injured on.
How often do they order?
Yeah.
Put a shameless plug in on that, when they do their playground inspections, can they inspect the bicycle repair stations?
That is one thing we're working on right now. What we've, what we're finding out so far is that the seals on those pumps, they don't last.
Yeah.
And so, Hondu is doing some research to see if we can even change.
Right. With the back, yeah. I'm sure you'll get it.
Yeah. Yeah, it's on our list.
What the deal at the library, is that where the new playground's going to go?
Yeah, what is that little flat thing?
That's swing set, yeah. And then, there's another structure. And the rotary has, has helped with some of that, so. Okay. So, I'll reach out.
We'll bring a bunch of old people to get in your way.
We're happy to have you.
It's good to have you. Excuse me.
Restrooms and shelters, they all need updated, brought to ADA compliance. Additional capital outlay for things at the cemetery and then just increases in cost and equipment. And then, we do have a budgeted, a full-time maintenance worker. We're considering changing that from a maintenance worker to more of a horticulturist, someone that would have a little more experience with some of the downtown flowers. Things of that nature, so that we're getting the right person in the right seat on the right bus.
This was a position that you approved for the 25 budget.
Right.
So, it's already been approved, they just haven't hired anybody because they're kind of changing the description of what they need.
Yeah, we were having a hard time finding anybody that could do that, that we, we could probably find maintenance people, but, but that's not what we need for this role. They need to have a little more experience in flower management and of that, that type of nature.
I'm going to add one more thing here that I think I overlooked in my slides for the clerk, this is kind of an intersection of the cemetery records. And this was the columbarium software. Denise reminded me that that's rolling out really soon here, they've been going through training, moving it over and again, that's a, to help with the user experiences, was really an accomplishment in the 2024, it's finishing up today. You saw those charges already go through in a previous budget, but that way you can look digitally and see where your loved one would be at and you can, we can manage it in a lot more efficient and effective way.
Yeah, to my understanding, there'll be a sign with a QR code or something that you can go up there with your, your cell phone and then it'll bring up a list, you know, opens up, so.
With the map as well, so that they can walk to the, from where they're at, they can walk to that location, so we don't have to have somebody always there, especially like for Memorial Day weekend. They're probably really inundated with people wanting to know where their loved ones are and so this will allow them to have that. We won't have it up this year, but we're starting training the last weekend in May.
Okay, and then on our budget sheet here, again, we just tried to hold the line as close as we could. Not a lot of changes there. Now sanitation, right, Donna?
Yes. We're going to change it up a little bit and go ahead, since Frank is here, we're going to go ahead and scoot up sanitation so he can head on out.
Okay, so sanitation. Sanitation is one of our divisions that I really, and so, I'm so appreciative of because of the customer service they offer. When I was at the service center, I don't know how many times we'd get phone calls just thanking us for the drivers and how well they handled picking up the trash. And, and I have a nephew that just goes gaga when this, when the sanitation truck shows up. So, he knows what time they're coming and he's at the window waiting to see that truck, so. And there have been occasions where sanitation drivers will actually stop and the kids can come out and they'll talk to them. So, I, I think from a customer service perspective, that's really important and I'm glad that we do that and I, and I encourage our drivers to do those things. But, you know, still get your work done, right?
When I had Mother's estate sale in April, one of the guys, we had so much stuff and he, he loaded it all up, he wouldn't let us do it. He, you know, we tried to help, he goes, no, no, we'll, I'll do it, you know, so they are very good at what they do.
So, we, we pride ourselves on providing very friendly, efficient customer service to picking up garbage of our residents, so. We provide a once-a-week garbage collection for approximately seven, almost 8,000 households. We do have a bulky item pickup, that gets utilized quite a bit. Majority of the phone calls that come in at service center are people trying to schedule bulky items. And then, they can also do that online through the Asela app and I get those, Sun, Sunday nights is when my phone blows up with people needing bulky pickups. And I think it's wonderful, but they're, they're utilizing that technology and I think it's great, so. And then, we just continue to educate the, we want to continue educating the public regarding solid waste and recycling options. 2024 major accomplishments, we collected 7,000 tons of solid waste. We completed almost 3,000 bulky item requests and probably a third of those came in on a Sunday evening. Delivery of roll-off dumpsters, we did 175. And then we put out almost 1,300 notices for right-of-way violations. I think that program works pretty good, people are, Frank can speak to this, but. Yeah, very few of them are going to the, the double charge type of thing, they, they get it handled pretty quick when they get that notice. Some of them don't like it, but that's okay, right? It's, we're, we're a live person, we'll take that phone call and we'll explain why. And so, I think it's been a good, it's been good, so.
It, I have a fun little anecdote. They were out trimming trees among the easement and a friend got a notice about the trees on the corner of their, their lot that morning. And then that afternoon, the tree people were back and cleaned, cleaned out their, their stuff that they had done, but man, I got a phone call on that one.
Are they just sitting there waiting to?
Yeah, so, it was funny. System works.
It works and, and the thing is that our staff don't necessarily know that that just went out that morning. They're just doing their round, you know, so. And that's why I think the notice is, it's just a notice at that point.
And that's what I said, because the call came to me, I got a ticket. Walk this one back a bit, let's read the top of it.
So, our goals and objectives for 25, 26, the increase, there will, there is an increase for the landfill, I think Hutch went up a dollar, so Newton, Harvey County will be going up a dollar, so that means we will increase that a dollar. And that is reflected when we get to the, the little budget, the budget sheet. So, we increase commercial rates, reflect the county's rate, we continue to ensure city rates align with that of the county. We continue the cleanup of Newton with junk-free curb programs, promote roll-off dumpsters. And then, continue to provide efficient, friendly customer service to all of our, all of our residents and all of our customers. It's just, it's a huge deal for us.
Can you use the roll-off dumpster for construction debris?
Yes.
Lift it up.
And then, it would have to, would have to be some, we'd have to make it understood that it's strictly construction.
Right.
Yeah, so you couldn't toss it back and trash it on there on top of it, so.
I'm just thinking, you know, a home project or whatever.
Yeah.
You can always get your permit at the water department to take it out to the transfer station yourself or to dump yourself. But if you use the dumpster, you only got to load it once.
Yeah, yeah, we encourage that, so.
I tell you what I miss, I moved a few blocks north, I can't call this service anymore.
Because that is across. Because that is across a railroad.
I miss it.
You know, maybe finance needs to have that same rule as wastewater.
Well, she would be within thirty minutes, we're okay. Um, operational challenges and budgetary changes, um, again, as the theme, retaining quality staff, getting hired and retaining quality staff. I don't mention in here, but CDLs, um, they have to have a CDO drive a dump truck, so that becomes, uh, a, a challenge. One kind of big thing, and Frank could probably speak to this a little bit better than me, but the, the way, so currently we use a multi-pack truck. They're no longer gonna make multi-pack trucks, which then will require the way we purchase trucks in the future, um, a little bit differently. The way we currently do it is when we replace a truck, that multi-pack, it gets moved down the line to become a commercial truck and it doesn't get used as often. And then we'll buy a new truck, but now when we buy a new truck, we can't buy a multi-pack. So we'll have to buy like one rear pack that would be dedicated strictly to commercial and then the rest of those trucks would, would be whatever, the, the residential one. So it's gonna get a little bit weird, we got some, we have time because, um, we just bought two new trucks. Right, but it's just to bring you up to speed that there's been some design changes, equipment, um, they don't, they're not making the equipment the same as they used to. So it will require us to, to make some adjustments on how we, um, provide this service.
We might need to up our transfer tumor a little bit more with that coming in when, as that gets closer.
Right, so. Um, and then obviously fee increases that we would want to consider. And then we did increase our MRR, thirty thousand in the equipment reserve to reflect the realistic replacement costs. If you recall, a few years back, we actually took eighty thousand away from that, um, to try and help, uh, push some things through. But we're getting to the point where we need to kind of get back in line with that so that we can make the purchases that we do need to make. So there was an increase in the MRR for thirty thousand. And then you can see, again, trying to stay similar or close to where we have been in the years past.
So the five twenty-five is what? All MRR or is it other?
There's a piece of that that is for the general fund, correct?
Yes, eighty thousand goes to the general fund, so hopefully we will not have to transfer that. The rest of it is MRR. And do you have a capital reserve as well?
No.
Is there, okay, so it's all MRR?
Yeah.
Pardon? Oh yes, there is some to the shop as well.
For repair on your equipment?
Yeah.
On the multi-pack stuff, can we purchase a chassis and move the multi-pack onto a new chassis? I don't know unless I have.
Sure, sure. Yeah, these trucks are on the road every day of the week, I mean, well, Monday through Friday, so it.
So the manufacturers figured out an opportunity to change their product and get more revenue?
That would be my opinion. Any other questions on sanitation?
Thank you.
I think you guys could head out. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you. Engineering is next.
Okay, engineering. So responsibilities, um, Rebecca alluded to some of this too, is, uh, we work as a city liaison, to other agencies, also internally, um, to help with, with, uh, items that need to be done for development. We provide quality, uh, environmental resources and, uh, transportation systems through our engineering and planning functions. Provide safe and strategic development of building houses, uh, sorry, buildings, houses, environmental code, um, and all city-owned buildings. And, um, again, we work, we work really closely, it's kind of become a team effort on the, um, development side of things, uh, to, to kind of spell out, like Daniela had kind of alluded to, to spell out what Public Works' role is and how there's, there's pieces and items of development that we need to look at prior to, um, people starting to dig in the ground and, and do construction. So, um, we're trying to open up that communication a little bit more and say, hey, if you're putting a water line in, we need to have those plans to review. The state has to review them, there's a time that goes along with that. So we're working really hard to, to better, um, those communications and the customer service, from the customer service end of that. Our major accomplishments. Yeah, next one, there we go. Um, so we completed the culvert and the water line and the road, um, at Southeast Fourth last year. That was, that was a big deal, um, to coordinate all that in one, I mean, usually we do one discipline, like we replace the road or we replace the culvert. But we did a whole new water line, which then involved putting in new services, which involved new meters, which then involved, you know, the concrete and the bridge and the storm sewer. So it was a big deal, but, um, I think it turned out really well, um, and I hope we can do more projects like that. Uh, we completed the, the Newton Public Library, um, I know my predecessor Suzanne, um, really, uh, had a soft spot for that and I think it turned out fantastic, um, you know, last night we, we were able to utilize that space and I thought it was great. It's, it's a wonderful addition to this community, so, um, we were part of that. We did the Washington Road Waterline Sewer Project, uh, that was kind of a big deal too, because we kind of just had a dead end of water and sewer there and we made some connections that are really, really help our system. First and Spencer Signals, as we continue to, to expand to the east, that signal with Quick Shop and all the truck traffic, that was a, uh, important addition that we did. We, we took first place for an award on the Mill and Overlay for K fifteen. And then, um, we had a real estate award for the Newton Public Library, um, it was in the journal, I believe, yeah. Business Wichita Business Journal, so, good things. Our goals and objectives, um, the annual overlay, that's always been one of those things that we always put at the top of the list. We want to make sure we're staying on top of our streets and when I think with the, the new technology and the Street Saver, I think we'll be doing a, even a, a better job of, uh, hitting the streets that really need it. It's one thing to look at it visually and say, yeah, I think this needs improvement, it's a whole other thing to look at it with data. And so we have that data now that helps us determine a better way of moving forward. We're almost complete with the Water and Sewer Master Plan, which again ties into, um, the development piece and, and understanding where the city can develop and how can they be served by utilities. Spencer Road Reconstruction, we're in the middle of it right now, um, the detours are quite challenging, because we have two different detours that are overlapping and so we're working through a lot of those issues and doing our very best, to try and get some of that stuff headed off and taken care of. It's been a struggle, um, if I'm being honest, it's been a struggle, but we'll get there. Hillside, again, just like Spencer, um, having those issues with construction and then, um, there's some roadway, road, road right-of-way stuff that we're dealing with there. Also, the Twelfth Street Mill and Overlay Project, that will get started, I want to say next week, but I could be off. I've been inundated with projects, so, uh, that will get started here soon. The plan for that is to be done by the time school starts, um, because we know that's a pretty major thoroughfare for the high school and whatnot. Quail Creek Pavement Extension, that is wrapping up from the street side, I think we're, we're pretty close to being complete there. There might be, uh, a PED, pedestrian signal station that we still need to install, but, um, that one's moving along, we're pretty close. I mentioned the First Street Water Tanks earlier and the water part, we're hoped, hopeful to have the testing done mid-June and then if everything goes well, then we're, we're operating out of both tanks by the end of June. And again, for twenty-six, we look at our overlay program, we have the Plum Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project we're looking at. Brian at the airport has been kind of, uh, running with the Runway Eight Two Six reconstruction piece. We've been helping, um, as, as he needs help, but he's, he's kind of, he's the guy in charge out there. Uh, once we get done with the tank project, then our goal is to try and get, um, a couple of the water towers painted. We need some minor repairs completed on those and they all need a new paint job, inside and out. And so that will be where we move to after the, the tank project's done.
And that was a portion of the loan we have for the water tank.
Yeah.
It was included years ago when we started that, so we think it's still included and we can get that done.
Are the First Street Tanks gonna be, have a painting scheme on the outside of them or are they just gonna be?
No, and we, we kind of went back and forth with that and we kind of settled on no, because if you recall the, the existing, the three million gallon tank there with the concrete plant right there, um, and, and the, and the creek, and you get dust and you get all that, those tanks sweat. And then when that happens, you get kind of that mold and that dirty look on there. So our plan was to try and make the color look like the dirty mold right now.
Marketing needs to work on that.
It's a plan.
So they'll, they will, they will remain kind of that, that dull, that dull gray color. Tank, uh, then KLP Phase One, uh, for the rail, we're working pretty diligently on trying to get that moving. We have some deadlines that we'll have to meet with, uh, with the grant and the construction. So some stuff that we're working through, some of the details there. Three twenty-one, or, sorry, sorry, excuse me, three twenty North Main, the demolition there, we're, we're really close to being at a spot where that will take place. Chris and I have a meeting with our consultant later this week to talk through some of that too, um, with the RFP and things of that, so we're close there. And then, uh, plans and specification update, this is one, um, that I kind of added. I, I feel like if you go online and you look at our, our engineering design standards and plans, that they're a little dated. And so we have reached out to a consultant to provide us with a, uh, a cost of what it would take to update those plans and specifications. And primarily the one that I really would like to look at is stormwater. The, the, the pieces that we use for stormwater, the books that we have used to develop those plans, they're obsolete, they don't even make those anymore. And I think our best option is to be more, um, in line with what Wichita does. And so what we would like, what I would like to see is that we develop our plans and specs kind of around Wichita and then if Wichita changes, then it's easy enough to say, we're just gonna follow in that vein. So that's our hope, um, but that is one of the things that I, I, I had put in here that I wanted to explain, so.
I will mention, probably next budget season, you'll see a new, um, and I don't know if we need to be thinking about it now, we're gonna have a new utility. It's gonna be the rail u- utility. So we might need to be adding some things in for this year, um, so we can spend in that for maintenance and insurance and stuff like that. So that's all kind of up in the air, because we don't, we've not done this before, so we're having to come up with those costs and stuff. So that's gonna be on your radar coming forward.
And then operational challenges, um, obviously due to retirement, um, of Suzanne who had giant shoes. It's been, there's been some challenges, um, Chris and I have, we've split duties and, uh, what Suzanne's duties were and we split those duties and I think we're, we're finding our groove. I still feel like I'm in the deep end of the pool, but I'm not necessarily drinking from the fire hose, so, um, it's good, I think we're moving through. It's, but it's been an adjustment, um, there was a lot of institutional knowledge that, that left and that obviously becomes a challenge. But she's been, uh, fantastic to get ahold of if there's something weird that happened that I can call and say, hey, any, any recollection? Oh yeah, I remember this, so, it's been good, um, but yeah, that has been a challenge. We planned for a GIS, um, engineer and we, we're really fortunate to get a gentleman, um, who is an FE and he was planning to get his PE, um, hopefully in August he may sit for a test. So I think that's a, a great addition that we would have, um, because there are other staff that are close to retirement in this division and if we can, uh, plan for that, I think that's much better than wait until they're gone and then we're, you know, scrambling. Technology continues to evolve, um, software support and purchases, we'll probably need to increase those in the upcoming years. The Street Saver software that we have, we just have a small piece of it. It does way more than what we're utilizing it for and I think as we move forward and we start getting familiar with it, that that might be one of those things that we would expand and use it, um, in a, in a different role through asset management and just looking at, at, uh, traffic signage, um, pavement repla- it does, it does a number of things when it comes to traffic.
Could we use that to move away from fixed maintenance zones to working the projects that are bubbled up through the system?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a possibility, I think you'd still want to keep your, kind of your fixed maintenance zones from a maintenance perspective. But from a project's perspective, that certainly would be advantageous, because you could say, hey, even though we're in Zone Two, we see that there's a, a bigger issue with a, a street in Zone Seven, that would let us focus our efforts on a project-wise versus, and if it would take a little maintenance ahead of the project, then we could certainly utilize that. But I still think there has to be some sort of a continuity to zoning for, just from, uh, plowing snow, cleaning out inlets. They have to have some, uh, guidance on which, where we're going and how we get there so that it gets done efficiently. But yeah, I think absolutely we could utilize some of that, but. And then also the, uh, the GIS, the ArcGIS that we're doing, I mentioned in the, the mapping and stuff with the water and sewer, um, staff with the new GIS engineer we have, we're, we're adding so many layers to this, we can, we, we've added like, uh, sewer basins, uh, water districts. We, we're hopeful to add like a layer of trees, so for our Parks Division, um, with the Tree City stuff, we can go out and add a layer of trees in there, we can put attributes on the valves in the water line that says, you know, um, it's a six-inch valve, it's a right-handed turn, fifteen turns to close, so there's a lot of good information that you could just keep adding data and adding data, but you have to stop somewhere and say, what's, what's worth, you know?
What has operational value?
That's important enough, yeah.
Being there.
But we're, we're reviewing those things constantly and I think, um, that, that, that technology has been, um, greatly, uh, used and I think it's been needed for quite some time and I think, um, we will continue to develop that and, and grow it into something even better.
I think that's good and I think what we have to also keep in mind is as we up our use of technology, uh, at least have a, a willingness or a curiosity of letting the technology maybe change how we do things instead of
Certainly.
using the technology but still doing things the old way.
Certainly, yeah. There's some new technology with AI that's coming out. My most, probably, I'm most familiar with sewer, um, but it, you can run a camera through this thing and it will start, to me it's a little creepy, but it somehow can tell you that there's a service here or there's a crack here or, you know, it, it just, it thinks for you. So you're not stopping the camera, typing in what it is, it learns it. And then you can put it in any sewer and it'll start seeing those same things, which then just, it makes life so much easier if it's utilized correctly, like you say, Mayor, um, to, to, to make it work for us and not, not just have this fancy little piece of equipment, but we're still writing everything down on a piece of paper, although that's hard to say, because I am a big Chief Tablet fan.
Way to read the room there.
Uh, and then, uh, engineering, the budget piece, um, again, trying to just stay within what we've been the last few years, so. Okay? And then the last one, Building Maintenance? I feel like I've been talking a while.
You're the Ed Show. You're doing great.
You're keeping us way ahead on time.
You're good.
Okay, Building Maintenance. Um, obviously, my theme is customer service, whether it be internal or external. I think it's, it's what makes things run. Without people, projects don't matter. And if you can't communicate well and, and display good customer service, um, what have you got? I don't have anything. So, um, we provide a customer service, um, through our custodial staff. We handle the Police Department, City Hall Service Center. Um, we are currently in the middle of finding a new custodial person. We had one, um, she got married, or I don't remember what, but...
Engaged and moved?
She moved to Manhattan, so, um, we've been a little bit, um, kind of a little hole there, but we're going through interviews, interviews right now, and so hopefully we'll find a good one and move forward with that. Um, our general building maintenance at all city buildings and facilities, um, including like the NRC, the Work and Teen House. Um, we have a crew of two that handle any number of those things, um, and there are going to be some retirements coming up. Um, and one of those is going to be a tough one to fill. Uh, but they help at airport, they help at, um, the library, the police department, Service Center. I mean, they are Johnny-on-the-spot with fixing your air conditioner, getting your heater running, um, so we utilize them a lot, and they're valuable to the city. Um, provide, they provide routine maintenance, uh, troubleshoot, and they, uh, because Gary, who's our supervisor, because he is a licensed master, um, mechanical tradesperson, he, we've saved so much money on his ability to install HVACs and do that. So it's going to be a, it's going to be a struggle, but we'll get through it, so, um, that's major responsibilities, and then, um, major accomplishments. Maintained all the custodial stuff at, at the various locations. Um, staff completed two hundred and seven work orders generated by departments through another, uh, piece of software called Maintained X. And, um, it, it, it streamlines things for those guys instead of the constant phone calls and, hey, I need help changing a light bulb or whatnot. They can, we can put up a work order in, and then they put it in their list and they get to it, and it's, it's been a, a great addition to the maintenance staff there. Um, we pulled a, a number of CAT Six wiring for the building upgrades, including across the street at the new Police Training Center. We installed some HVAC units, um, new shop heaters out at, uh, Parks Facility. They've upgraded, um, most of our lighting to LED, which is a huge cost savings from electrical standpoint. Worked with, oversaw contractors on numerous projects. Currently, there's a project going on at the Work and Teen House with the chimneys, and, um, they've been overseeing that and making sure that stuff's getting handled correctly and...
That's invaluable. That's going to be tapped in.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and so obviously, you know, the places that we've done all this work, I've listed over here a location. It's, you know, it's every facility that the city has a finger on, so, um, it's a pretty, pretty great service, I think, that we offer, so. And then our objectives, continue general, general building maintenance and custodial, um, services. We may look at, it's not this year, but certainly as, if we start getting more buildings like the Police Training Center, it may require a little more custodial help. I don't know, part-time person or something in twenty-seven, I don't know. But it's just something on my radar to, to maybe think about depending on where things go. Um, we need to replace the HVAC components at several locations, um, one of them being here, uh, third floor. On admin side, I really don't want to make those folks upset when it's hot, so, um, we're going to work hard to get those replaced.
Another one is the NRC.
And the NRC, I think, I might have mentioned that later on, but...
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, the NRC, it's on its last leg. It is, um, we replaced the, Gary told me we replaced the heating pieces of it, but I don't, I don't speak mechanical very well, but, uh, there's some part of it that's cracked, and that needs to be fixed and replaced, or it's, it's just, it's on its, we have, we're on borrowed time right now with it. And it's, it is pricey. Um, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I...
It's about a hundred twenty-five thousand.
Hundred twenty-five thousand is what I thought, yeah, so...
But it's well past its day, so it's lasted well. But we, we should have been saving money for it and stuff, but it was kind of overlooked, you know? So it's on the list now.
Yeah, so we have, we have kind of looked a little harder at that MRR for the Building Maintenance piece, and so there, there are some pretty big changes on that MRR, um, when we get there, but, um, obviously, continue assisting with, um, oversight at various projects. Currently, it's the Work and Teen House, and then, um, we would like to get the, the hall tile in the basement of this building replaced. There's a couple of not good form spots. It's just time, so. Operational challenges, again, uh, I spoke to retirements and succession planning, backfilling key personnel. It's going to be pretty critical. The increasing material prices and shipping times, uh, again, it's a theme, uh, aging building equipment. Uh, and here's where I had replacement of the HVAC equipment at the rec center. It's, it's, it's pricey, but it does need to happen. Um, the chillers here at Service, at City Hall, um, one of them is working fine, the other one's only half-working. Gary was explaining some stuff to me on, we have some options, so I'm still looking at what, what we might do, um, moving forward with those chillers, uh, because I really would hate for those to go down, and then the whole building is, um, upset with not, with sweating too much. And then, uh, just develop a more inclusive equipment reserve plan for city-owned buildings, which we have been working on, so. That's kind of what happens there, and then on our, on our budget sheet here, you can kind of see where we're at. That's all I have.
This might, you might see a change in this one. There, he keeps talking about the Building Maintenance MRR. We have a design kind of where we're adding in all these places that aren't really anywhere on our, in our thought process and our MRRs, um, like the NRC, the Workington. We just kind of get it out of either general somehow when we need it, or Echo Devo when we need it. So these are going to be put in there, so it could bring the transfers up, uh, quite considerably. And we'll show you what that looks like, and whether we go forward or not would be your option, but it could raise it up like, like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars there in that transfer line to get this going. But we'll have that, and we can show that to you and see what, if you want to do anything like that.
Questions?
A lot of work went into all of this.
Full disclosure, Rebecca helped me with a lot.
Doesn't matter, that's what a team does.
And we have a full set tomorrow. Um, did you want to, since you're here, do you want to go over any more that were scheduled for tomorrow? If we can do that, or do you want to just quit early today and we'll get the rest of them tomorrow as scheduled? Is that okay? Okay, we'll let you out an hour early.
Well, I just would like to say to Ed, um, Suzanne took her shoes with her, and you are filling yours as well.
Sure, thank you.
And I appreciate your attitude, um, on customer service, internal and external. Because that good external customer service comes from people who are working well together internally. And so I appreciate your attitude towards that, and then your attitude toward, we'll make it. I appreciate that. Thank you for vocalizing that on more than one occasion, so.
I, I also appreciate the, uh, the long-term strategy and planning for all of the MRR, and the equipment replacement, which is, you know, just like you say, there's some things like at the rec center or whatever that really, it's not plugged in anywhere. We have to do that. We have to get it all mapped out so that, let's do it now. We know it's, it's hard. Let's bite the bullet and let's do it.
Thank you all very much for your time.